Please rise and join me in honoring America. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Mr. Conway.
Here.
Ms. Dougherty.
Here.
Ms. Lariva.
Here.
Mr. Leahy.
Here.
Mr. Larry.
Here.
Ms. Martin.
Here.
Mayor Milonazzo.
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you. Good evening. First order of business, special order of business, I don't believe we have any special order of business this evening. Moving on to the minutes. We have the minutes in our packet. Motion to approve the minutes is presented by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Lariva. Any questions, comments? All those in favor of accepting the minutes as presented signify by saying aye. Post the vote. Thank you. Permission to enter. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Your Honor. Brandon Residential Treatment Center for the amount of eighty-eight thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars to amend the existing contract to provide for the additional out-of-district tuition costs for one student plus three additional students enrolled and receiving services as outlined in their special education IEP. Funding provided by the school department budget special education tuition account. Health and education services for the amount of thirty-two thousand two hundred and sixty-nine dollars to amend the existing contract to provide for the additional out-of-district tuition costs for one student plus three additional students enrolled and receiving services as outlined in their special education IEP. Funding provided by the school department budget special education tuition account. Latham Centers for the amount of nineteen thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars to amend the existing contract to provide for the additional out-of district, sorry, out-of district tuition costs for one student plus one additional student enrolled and receiving services as outlined in the special education IEP. Funding provided by the school department budget special education tuition account. The Home for Little Wanderers for the amount of forty-eight thousand two hundred and sixty-eight dollars to amend the existing contract to provide for the out-of district tuition additional costs for two students plus one additional student enrolled and receiving services as outlined in the special education IEP. Funding provided by the special education department budget special education tuition account. The Judge Rothenberg Educational Center for the amount of one hundred and seventy-six thousand four hundred and three dollars to amend the existing contract to provide for a one-on-one pair for one student plus one additional student enrolled and receiving services as outlined in the special education IEP. Funding provided by the special education department special education tuition account. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Ms. Martin.
Thank you very much. Just a quick question, like using the first one as an example, this Brandon Residential Treatment Center, so is this paying for one student's amended tuition and then three additional students to attend? And it's only coming up to that eighty-eight thousand dollar number? I shouldn't say only, but...
Sorry, it's all because of the time of the year of the placement, so that the eighty-eight thousand dollars wouldn't be for the full year. These would have been kids that were placed in over the last same month or so. So if you're only looking at this point in time to June, the contract would be higher for July 1st.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Mr. Leahy?
Thank you. We just had the meeting earlier, a subcommittee meeting, and so on the last one, the Judge Rothenberg Educational Center, you know, this is for one student and one pair isn't? And it's a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars.
Ms. Murphy.
Thank you. It's for one additional student with a one-to-one paraprofessional. There is already a student there. One of the students who was already there will be maxing out age-wise as of July. The remaining student with the one-to-one para, we are looking to bring the student closer into a program that is not only closer to Lowell, but we feel is a stronger program. At this time, this was the only program that would accept the student.
Could you, could you just, like for everybody's benefit, just, why is it so expensive at this one place? Is this state rate or is this, I mean...
The rates are established by the state, and this particular facility services students with multiple, multiple needs, with significant cognitive delays, physical delays, medically challenged students, and significant behavioral issues, which is the reason for the one-to-one paraprofessional.
And just because of the medical, maybe that's why it's so expensive too?
The state looks at the services that each facility provides, what the staffing ratio is, and what's needed to run the programs, but they set the rates.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Leahy. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, the chair would entertain a motion to accept the items contained in the permission to enter by Mr. Conway, seconded by Ms. Lariva. Roll call.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Ms. Lariva.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
Larva, yes.
Mr. Larry.
Mr. Larva.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Milonazzo.
Yes.
Seven ayes, approved.
Thank you. Memorials this evening, there are none. Moving on, unfinished business. Motion by Mr. Leahy requesting the superintendent report on the April 21st, 2010, regular meeting of the school committee on the decision and permissibility to utilize a portion of the proceeds from the annual Lowell High School golf tournament to renovate alumni field instead of being fully allocated towards student scholarships. And then we also have the Lowell High School subcommittee report below. The chair would recognize Mr. Leahy.
Thank you, Your Honor. We had this discussion at the subcommittee meeting for the high school last week. It's back on the agenda just because when the motion was originally written, it was to come back in a report. But we did have a good discussion with the headmaster about this. Honestly, I was, you know, we aired everything out. It's great that we're partnering up to fix the field and that we have the golf tournament going on. At the meeting, I just expressed my concerns that the, I thought that we had lost our focus with the, with the scholarship part of the, of how the whole program started, and we talked about that. So basically, you know, it's happening, we're not going to stop it, but we just add our feelings about the campaign for excellence. We want to make sure that it continues, and just would like to see, you know, that more money go into the campaign next time around. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Leahy. Any other comments, questions? Except the report, it's a report of progress by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Ms. Lariva. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Vote, thank you. Under public participation, Dennis Ferrera, Vice President, GLEU, to speak on two agenda items that affect GLEU units. Mr. Ferrera. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Basically, the first item on the agenda, the custodial thing, we don't feel that that's advantageous. Many years ago, before I became a custodian, seventeen years ago, there used to be DPW workers that worked for the school department. From all accounts that I've heard, it used to work fairly well back then. So now to try to put us on the city side, I kind of disagree with that. The second issue is the food service, and I know we're currently running a deficit. We recently, last year, made three hundred thousand, three hundred and ten thousand in personnel cuts, and I believe Mr. Dagnan, possibly through our advisement, saved about a hundred thousand in milk. And I've given you guys a whole packet, a couple pages of more recommendations to save further funds, and I hope to work with you in the future to try to get some of these costs under control. If you'd like, I'd go through a couple of the ideas that I came up with. We would like to increase school lunch prices to two-twenty-five for students and five dollars for teachers. That would be a twenty-eight percent increase in the current revenue that you get from students, and an eighty-two percent increase from current revenue that you get from teachers. And the reason for this is because we haven't raised our lunch prices in quite a long time. I can't remember ever raising lunch prices since I've been a custodian. And as you know, prices of milk and grains and the transport of the foods go up every year. Basically, five, nine, twelve, about eleven percent since 2007, and still we haven't raised food prices, lunch prices. We also need to get together and encourage more families out there to sign up if they're eligible for free and reduced lunches. And if they live in low-income families, they get the free lunches, and they will not be hurt by the price increase. The federal government reimburses the city for the cost of these lunches. In my research, the average cost of a school lunch in the state is about two dollars. Another idea that we came up with was to exchange the ten-ounce plastic milks for eight-ounce cardboard milks, and there's two benefits to this. One, less waste, less cost, and also you're not putting the plastic into the landfills. To the best of my knowledge, we aren't recycling our plastic milk bottles right now. So I think that might be a good idea to go there. There's always extra milks in the school, and if, you know, if a kid needs to buy one, that's fine, but there's usually extras around if they need them. So going with the cardboard might be a good idea. Another idea that we came up with, we would like to eliminate one hot lunch per week, and this would save approximately twenty percent of the styrofoam trays we currently use in our lunch from going into the trash. It would also save on the cost of those styrofoam trays. And these lunches can be put in a brown bag, just like if a kid was going to a field trip for a day, could have a sandwich, an apple, a juice, right inside the bag. And I think it'd be a novel, novelty for the kids, and they might enjoy it, and save us money and keep stuff out of the landfill. We can even call it like "Trailer Tuesday" or "Bag Lunch Wednesday." And basically, it is our hope to use the status of the free and reduced seventy-five percent to try to bring our food service program to a hundred percent commodity-driven. And that's going to take some creative menu planning and constant inventory monitoring, but I think if we all work together, we can do it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ferrera. Thank you. Moving on with the motion section of the agenda, we have five motions this evening. The first, Mr. Leary requests the superintendent to work with the city administration on to review and determine if the school department custodial services and technology departments could achieve a cost savings and service improvement by incorporating into the city budget and administration. Seconded by Mr. Leahy. Mr. Larry.
Thank you. I guess the first part of it, it's a mirror motion of Counselor Kevin Broderick that was made at the council meeting, I don't believe yesterday, but the preceding week. What Mr. Broderick, Counselor Broderick did essentially is ask for any, I guess, you know, I love the word synergies, synergies between the city side and the school side, where we could be saving money by taking over services in the city, so we could be spending money on, you know, teachers. I think he used the example, instead of cutting science teachers, let's take the money and put it into ensuring we don't cut science teachers. So I talked to Counselor Broderick regarding this, that I would have a motion specifically regarding two areas where there is, there is overlap in terms of the services. The first part of it is the IT department. The IT department in our budget and in the city budget, I believe, is just not sufficient to meet the needs of an organization such as the City of Lowell. So I don't anticipate being any cost savings, but I do anticipate working together to ensure that we are maximizing the limited resources that we already have. If anybody went through, we know this is school committee folks, I'm sure the city side would agree the same, if anyone through the IT departments and said, "How are you staffed?" And you looked at the numbers of people in terms of the equipment that you're purchasing year in, year out, we'd have to admit we're not where we need to be, and we're continuously trying to strive, you know, pasting things together to, to put together an effective IT department. So really, it's to ensure that we're working together, utilizing each other's resources. I don't see actual any cuts. The other side is, as Dennis pointed out, was the custodial service issue. As everybody knows, or should know, the DPW takes care of the building side, or the majority of the building, the roof, the HVAC, the plumbing, et cetera. And on our custodial service side takes care of the everyday basic maintenance and cleaning and high quality of, you know, removing trash, et cetera. Looking at that to see if there are any areas where we could have a cost savings might be a benefit. I think the motion itself says, request that we sit down with the city administration to see if this is even reality. Okay, I got a couple phone calls today from some folks saying, "I can't believe you're gonna, you're gonna cut my salary making me a DPW laborer." And that's not the point. The point is having discussions, sitting down with the city side to see if it's even feasible. As Dennis outlined, that this was attempted about twenty years ago, seventeen years ago, and didn't make much sense then, why would it make sense now? I think we need to take a look at it. If it doesn't work, it doesn't make sense, then we don't do it. I don't anticipate, and from what I look at in terms of going through these reorganizations and discussions, that it would even be applicable to this budget year. However, because we're going to be faced with the same wonderful scenarios next year, potentially six, eight, nine million dollars next year, or twenty-five million plus over three years, this is something we need to take a look at. If it doesn't work, if it doesn't improve the services, if it doesn't have a cost savings, then we don't do it. I don't suggest to, to the superintendent and staff that we actually sit down during the budget year and have these discussions now. They probably would take a lot of time to go through all the intricacies of each and every department. But I do think it's something we need to look at. I know the council wants to look at it, and I think it's something we should do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Larry. Chair recognizes Ms. Martin.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'll certainly support this motion. I think we need information, and I think we need to be looking at a lot of creative ideas right now. So not knowing what the result will be, I certainly will always be in the market for better, stronger information. One thing, if my colleague would indulge me, if we might be able to add into this, and I'd put it in the form of an amendment to the motion, if Mr. Leary doesn't mind, we've talked over the years, and it's generally been during, during our negotiation sessions, about the idea of shifting to either a bi-weekly or a monthly pay schedule. I can't give in any way numbers right now, but I do recall, and again, it's been over the course of time, that there were some significant savings to be, to be gleaned if we made this shift. I guess I'll put it on the list of wildly unpopular items, much like Mr. Leary's other items, so it'll go well in the motion. But I do think it's something that now's the time to really look at. If we could find some savings, and I know some of these conversations have been going on, because it is, you know, it is part of bargaining, and it's something that, you know, we'd need to work together with our unions to be able to achieve, both here on the, on the school side, and I would suspect on the city side as well, that there could be some savings gotten from this. But some of the, just changes over the last ten years of being able to have mandatory direct deposit, being able to have, eliminate the paper checks that, that people get, I think there are a lot of other payroll efficiencies that we might be able to find, that I think if we're working together with the city, we'd be able to achieve kind of a critical mass of, of some savings. So with Mr. Leary's, I'd offer that as an amendment to his motion.
Amendment by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Leary. Any further discussion? Mr. Leahy?
Thank you. I like the motion too, and basically, it's a good idea to, to bring these things out in the open and talk about them. I mean, this is what open government is. We have to look at all options. We have to look at every avenue, you know, to try to save money. And as my colleague said, if it doesn't lead anywhere, it doesn't lead anywhere. But it's out in the open, we're going to discuss it, and we're going to see if there are any efficiencies to be made. And then I just wanted to make one comment about the sheet we got tonight when Mr. Ferrera spoke. These are good ideas. I just, were any of these, would anybody know if any of these were on that, the food report we got a couple months ago or a month ago? Some of them are, right? So, okay. Because some of them are good ideas, you know, going from the plastic to the, to the cardboard container, and maybe the bag lunch once a week or something like that. So, and I'm sure we'll discuss this. I wasn't too crazy about going over two dollars for the increase in the, in the food, but it may be time to go up another quarter. But I am looking forward to the discussion. We'll see if we can have any savings on this. Thank you.
Mr. Conway?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just very briefly, I think certainly during these times, and we're going to be faced with some very bizarre situations, I think, in the next few months with the budget, and I think it is important to take a look at any type of plan that might save some money. And I think the whole idea of getting information, I think we've talked about this numerous times, is, is probably a pretty good idea. The only, the only thing I do, I hesitate a little bit here because I, I look at the, the custodial staff last year that took tremendous cuts, and we still have to have clean buildings. And, and I'm not exactly sure how partnering up with the, with the city side can help, help out on that, and I'd be very curious to find that out. But the fact is, there's still a square footage issue, and you still have to, you still have to maintain cleanliness for these fourteen thousand students. And, you know, having said that, again, if there's some creative ideas, fine. I think that, I think we'd probably all be open to hear, hear what the results of those meetings will be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conway. Any other comments, questions? All those in favor of the motion as amended signify by saying aye. Post the vote. Thank you. Next motion filed by Ms. Larva and Mr. Leary. Instruct the superintendent to provide a break-even food service budget at a minimum within the upcoming proposed 2010, 2011 budget, specifically at a minimum removing from the food service department budget any current deficits or potential future deficits that may occur due to operational cost increases such as healthcare costs. Seconded by Mr. Conway. Who would like to? Ms. Larva.
Thank you, now that we've juggled that through. Prior to my getting on the school committee board and attending last year's budget sessions, one of the things that I spoke out about as a parent was the huge deficit that was budgeted for food services. Part of that conversation led to a cut of three hundred and ten thousand, and I would be remiss if I didn't say that, that they went above and beyond that in terms of hitting their three hundred and ten mark and going further and bringing it up to almost four hundred thousand. And I think that's wonderful, but it does not change the fact that at this point, it's at a deficit, and I personally cannot look at cutting other programs when we have something that's in the black that I feel could be break-even. I am encouraged that GLEU stepped forward with a list of suggestions. I look forward to talking in depth with them about that, but I think it is prudent for us to go ahead and move forward and see what other steps we can be taking, and just make sure that we understand we cannot run that in a deficit. We need to run it as a break-even. And I'll turn this over to my colleague, Mr. Leary.
Chair recognizes Mr. Leary.
Thank you. I think, and I appreciate what Dennis Ferrera, Mr. Ferrera articulated, and the information that we're looking at tonight regarding some proposals, and I think they're very valuable proposals. The first one, I think, is what's something that came up at our last, one of our last finance meetings, was regarding the exchange of ten-ounce milk versus eight-ounce milk, and the savings of fifty thousand dollars yearly right off the bat, which, you know, it doesn't sound like two ounces a lot, but fifty thousand, when you're dealing with currently a three hundred thousand dollar deficit, is a significant, you're down to two fifty already. Some of the other issues I haven't really thought of in terms of increasing the lunch prices. One of the reasons why we haven't increased the lunch, two of the reasons that I think, and if I'm wrong, someone correct me. The first one is we haven't increased because it's only thirty percent, or twenty-five percent of the students would be affected by the increase. I don't think the federal government subsidizes, seventy-five percent subsidized lunches would be allowed to have an increase. So you're taking a segment of seventy, twenty-five percent roughly, number can move, would be the one that'd be affected. And the other issue is, it's, it's actually, if two dollars is the average cost of a lunch program, we're going twenty-five cents over that. We think we're at a dollar seventy-five right now. Although I look at it, because I think it's something that, as Mr. Ferrera pointed out correctly, there's been increases in every, food goes up, increases have gone up. I don't know when we raised the price last, it's something to be good to, to take a look at. I want to echo what my colleague, Ms. Larva, said. You're looking at anywhere, and this is the maddening part of it, you don't really know what you're looking to cut. It's anywhere where it's all between six, well, last week it was seven million, now it's anywhere between six to nine million. And ordinarily, you'd look at that and say, "Well, that's not real." After living through last year, where it started off at around four million and ended up in July at eight million, not even counting the Title I cuts and other, other cuts that we received from other budget areas that are not part of the regular budget, it's maddening. It's the only word I can think of, and I think everything is on the table. I can't look at anyone and say that I'm running a deficit and cut them. And I know that even though it's three hundred thousand dollars, and the food service folks did come up with four hundred thousand dollars in savings, three hundred and ten of them through personnel, and the remainder was, I guess, from, from buying a product and doing it in a more efficient manner, and they should be commended for it, by the way, the entire staff. We're still looking at three hundred thousand dollar deficit. We are going to be laying off teachers. We are going to be laying off administrators, vice principals, housemasters perhaps, guidance counselors perhaps, clerical workers perhaps, run the gamut. We're not, we've already eliminated an HR assistant superintendent. We're looking at everything, everything is up. And the mantra last year was, if we're not cutting it last year, we're probably going to cut it this year. And as insane as saying that is, is reality, it's going to happen. And if we're not cutting it this year, the recklessness is we're going to take a look and cut it next year. I'm, I just, I appreciate, I guess the thing is, I think one thing I probably haven't done as a committee member is say that I appreciate the fact you guys put the effort in, in terms of coming up with suggestions. I do appreciate it. And I will, as Ms. Larva articulated, be willing to, to work with anyone to bring the deficit down. How the deficit come down, as long as it's, it's ethical and legal, it doesn't, it's not that, it's not as important as we bring the deficit down. I don't, you know, I don't know how to make, it's, it's not a nice thing. It's, it's not a good thing to sit here and say that we're trying to eliminate human beings that work and work hard and work effectively and are part of our team. But the, but the fact remains, we are going to be laying off people in almost every position within this, in this district. So I guess it is what it is, and I apologize. I wish, I wish I had eight million dollars to, to roll into the budget, but I don't. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leary. Anyone else? Ms. Martin.
Thank you. I just think that we, we need to be clear, as we're kind of offering up this, this motion and asking the, the administration to come back with ideas, you know, I think that, and we've all said it, this is not a unique sentiment, everything's on the table, there's nothing that we can't, that we're not willing to consider. We have to look at everything. And I think that, you know, there are, you know, topics that we've discussed in previous years that weren't, we couldn't make happen, maybe this is the year they do. I mean, this just, I'm in the first to admit that I don't know where the lines are going to be drawn this year. But I do think that we need to be aware that the, what's coming back to us from the administration should be including prepackaged, the prepackaged option, if that's something that, that makes this work, that we have to recognize that that's a, you know, a real choice that we're going to need to make. I think that we've, given the, the structure of our, of our staffing and our lack of flexibility right now, because of the, the way things stand, you're not going to have a lot of options that, that don't include really blowing this up. And I think that that's what we all need to be aware of, is what we're going to be getting back, that the efforts to kind of buy some flexibility and all that, just, we haven't been successful. And I think that's why we just need to be prepared, and I would want the union to be aware of that, I want everyone to be aware of that, that this isn't going to be a situation where we're shaving off a little here and a little there. To, to eliminate a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar deficit in, you know, in this size of program, I think it's going to, it's going to require some pretty dramatic and drastic actions. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else on the motion? Madam Superintendent?
I have a question for the maker of the motion. Mr. Leary, with regards to breaking even, I do have to follow up on what Ms. Martin just said with regards to, I think the committee will need more information than we presently have to be able to make informed decisions. So I do need some indication from the committee of what the next steps would be. Is it to get information through an RFP process? We know right now that we have a contract that's not settled, which will also impact the bottom line of this, you know, of this whole unit. As Ms. Larva mentioned, last year, the committee instructed actually Assistant Superintendent Lang to reduce the budget by a hundred thousand. He reduced it by over three hundred thousand. Restructured all of the staffing, and, you know, brought the kitchen services to the Rogers School that serviced many different schools. We realized real savings there. But we're at the point right now, with, given all the variables that we have, I just want to be very upfront with you, I don't think it's realistic that we can tackle that type of deficit, one with our present contract, that's in... present contract that's in place, and two, with the, basically the services that we presently provide. So I put that out there as a question and look for guidance.
Mr. Hardy.
Thank you, Your Honor. And I'm not the maker of this motion, but I would just like to respond from my perspective on the superintendent's question. My understanding with the request for proposal, we cannot do that unless we are actually going to seriously consider privatizing. We don't do RFPs for information gathering. So I would suggest that we perhaps look at districts in the area that are currently outsourcing this to get some comparison costs. And the other piece of that would be, you know, in terms of just looking at, in my response to my colleague's motion here, what are some other savings we might be able to see with the current program that we have? That would be my suggestion.
Ms. Martin and Mr. Leahy.
Thank you very much. And I think one of the key things that perhaps we should be looking at is, again, the way we're tied up in our current, the current negotiations status, I'm trying to be careful just because as you all recognize, we can't talk about specifics of our negotiations. But I do think it would behoove us, as you're going through this process, if we were to incorporate what potential flexibilities could be found that we could take advantage of in terms of substitutes and things like that, that I know we've been discussing for a great, great, a great, great long time, and see if we might be able to bring back to the committee maybe a perfect world scenario where that was in place and we could see what those real savings would be. Because that could be, I mean, in my mind, it's the only thing I see as the other kind of giving point. It's either we go to a whole new system or we get the flexibility we need to make this, to make it work.
Thank you. Mr. Leahy.
Thank you. The way I read the motion, though, and I guess what my question would be, I know we did get a food service report, but, I mean, are we at the end of, at the end of the line on, are we not wasting any food? Are we, you know, instead of having the ketchup packets, should we put out big ketchup? I mean, in containers that the kids can pump out? I mean, are we at the end of all of our ideas for saving money? Because, I mean, just from being around the area, I know, we happen to be down at Newton-Wesley Hospital a lot, and they run a daily special in their kitchen. You can go in and get, for $4.50, you can get a big breast of chicken, rice, potatoes, and a drink. So, I mean, it's twice as much food you get in the schools. I mean, why can't we provide a fresh meal like that? If this company can do it, I mean, maybe they're making money somewhere else on all their beverages all day long, but, I mean, I've been in the lunches and for $2, they're probably not even worth, some of the schools, I mean, I can't see it costing half of that to put it out. I mean, the kids complain that they get three or four nuggets and you get a little of this, little of that, so I don't know why, if we're not at the end of the, our ideas on how to serve food, fresh food, good food for the kids, and do it for under $2. You know, I'd like to know that first. But we've got to come up with some ideas to cut that cost. Ideally, we'd like to keep people working. So, I mean, until I hear that we're at the end of all of our ideas on how to serve food, I mean, that was one of the ideas that Ms. Laraba brought up before. How much food are we actually wasting? And I apologize if it's in that report and I didn't read it thoroughly enough, but, you know, are we saving money or not wasting food? So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Conway?
Yeah, just very quickly, I echo what Mr. Leary has, Mr. Leahy has just mentioned here. The fact is that the issue, when we talk about break-even, I think that's, I think that's probably the real problem, and I think that might have been what superintendent was addressing, that in order to get to that level, it's probably going to be more than a Herculean task. But I'm just wondering whether, whether the superintendent can come back with as many additional savings as possible. And it might not get to that point of break-even, but it might be additional savings like Mr. Leahy just mentioned. Plus, the fact is, as our speaker just came in tonight with a list of possible savings, I have not gone over that, and I don't think anybody really has, has taken those and analyzed them to find out whether, whether they're feasible and whether they can actually save some money. So I think by incorporating that, that list, plus some, you know, again, trying to be as creative as possible, maybe we can make some more savings, perhaps not to the point of what this motion is saying is a break-even. That's the only issue I have with it. I mean, I agree to go forward with the motion, but the break-even is probably going to be very difficult to meet.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Conway. Mr. Leary.
Sure. I guess, I don't know how, my colleague, Mr. Leahy articulated about Newton-Wesley Hospital. I don't know what the food prices are for Newton-Wesley Hospital. I know it wasn't Newton-Wesley Hospital putting it on. But it's also not, you know, it's, it's a private company doing that. This thing that Mr., the outline that Mr. Ferrer presented has some interesting possibilities from my point of view. You're looking at 10-ounce to 8-ounce milks. Not only you're having a savings of $50,000 right off the bat, which brings the deficit down to 250, but you also have ways of saving and actually recycling milk bottles, which we don't do. I guess, you know, and there's another one here regarding, I won't say, there's another $50,000 savings mentioned that I won't say because I don't, involves an individual, but I don't know if that makes sense or doesn't make sense. I never thought about it before. I think it's an interesting thing to take a look at. I guess my question right now is, the budget is going to be presented on May 19th. We'll have to vote on it by the end of May, beginning of June. Do we have time to take a look at this information and make decisions to get this to level funded? Or do we don't have any more time at this point? Ms. Martin said the words correctly. I guess really we're looking at, can we get the flexibility in terms of our discussions with our folks, or do we need a complete new system? And it's not an easy question to ask. I guess the bottom line is, can we wait two weeks to the next meeting of May 5th to see if we need an RFP? Or do we need, is this the last time we can do it in order to implement it by September or L8 August?
Madam Superintendent.
That's my question to the administration.
Madam Superintendent.
Thank you. Because of the tight timeline that we're on, you would have to give permission for us to put the RFP out tonight. Two weeks at this point would just be too late for us to do it. So we do need to know what direction you would like us to go in with regards to that issue.
Just a follow-up question to that one. Now, varieties of RFPs, you're looking at, you can do an RFP to look at the management of the system as well, correct? As opposed to just the particular workers, the school workers, if you will?
Madam Superintendent.
Yes, that's correct. My understanding is that you can look to outsource any portion of that administration or the actual service. There is, we did have a conversation with regards to the issue of RFP and getting additional information. And in fact, that is your prerogative as a committee, it is my understanding from the legal department, for you to entertain getting more information with the idea of seriously considering what's within that RFP. It seems somewhat counterintuitive to think that you would be able to make a decision without that information on, if in fact, if that was a real option or not, without getting that information. So that was the conversation that we had with Assistant Superintendent Lang, can speak to her perhaps further, but yesterday with the attorney who deals with these type of issues. So my recommendation at the committee right now, and I just want to be real clear on this, that if you want this as an option, I need to know tonight so that we're within the timeline and that my committee, you guys, all have the information in front of you that you desire.
Mr. Leahy and Ms. Martin.
Well, I just wanted, I don't know, I guess by reading the motion, I really don't see anything about an RFP, but if that's where we're going to go. My question is, I don't understand really why, I mean, can't we get this information from our food service director and let us know, you know, are we wasting any food? Has he looked into going from the 10-ounce to the 8-ounce cottons? And I know we talked about the trays and all that stuff in the last meeting, but, I don't know. I mean, my point about Newton-Wesley Hospital, if they can put a meal together that's better than going to McDonald's and it's three, $4 cheaper, I don't know why we can't in our schools with all that equipment, put out a $2 meal that's healthy and probably save us some money.
Madam Superintendent.
A report was given to the committee probably about two months ago with regards to the breakdown of both the salaries and the healthcare costs associated with the employees and within this particular unit. And if you recall, some of the healthcare costs surpassed the wages that people were making. And so although I know nothing about the program that you're referring to, quite likely, what happens at least in other school departments is that they have hired an outside company, they hire part-time people, and they don't provide healthcare costs. Because as we saw in the report provided to us by Assistant Superintendent Lang, healthcare costs are really what's, it's not so much the wages, because we're very sensitive to the fact that our employees who work in our cafeterias are very hard workers and they don't make a lot of money. But in fact, the healthcare costs are significant. And so, and then, Mr. Leahy, when you mentioned, you know, the quantity of food that the hospital's able to provide, because our healthcare, there is only so much money, and right now, obviously, we're running in a deficit. And so the proposal in front of us tonight, which is not a new proposal, which has come in front of the committee before, to reduce the ounces of milk from 10 to 8, is just another example of us, again, not being able to provide, and for argument's sake, perhaps the hospital's giving it 10 ounces, but they're choosing to put the money into food and not into healthcare costs. So it's choices at this point, and I just want the committee to be well aware of the choices that we're making here tonight. And again, to the extent that I think, you know, as I've heard various committee members speak on this issue many times now, I think we really have tried to work with the union. We want to continue to work with the union, but we have a significant deficit, and we've looked at right down to the milk costs. And, you know, that's where we are right now. Ketchup, milk costs, is there room for improvement? I wouldn't say there isn't, but again, the margin is not, it's not big enough. Now, a few years ago, you hired a consultant to look into the quality of food services, food choices, and that program was implemented and implemented quite well, and you got a significant number more students who started to buy their lunches. So that work was done. In that report, it's my understanding that the consultant did say that this day would come. It's here. It's a difficult decision that I know that we all face. So I'm just, again, looking for, to the committee for some guidance on what information at this point. Do you want us to come back with a report that will have milk reduced from 10 ounces to 8 ounces, that's 50,000, and chip away? And I'm not sure how much ultimately that can, will be. I just don't want to be in the position in a few weeks' time to come up with a report that soundly can reduce X amount of dollars, but there's still a pretty big deficit there going into, as people are, I'm sure, tired of me saying, a very difficult budget year.
Thank you. Ms. Martin and Ms. Laraba.
Thank you very much. My understanding in reading the letter or the memo from the solicitor's office is that we did have the option of not necessarily going out with an RFP, but going out for an RFI, a request for information. Being, now, my sense was that the industry may not respond, because if it's not a specific RFP, they may not respond. Having never done this, I can't speak to that. But as I think you had said too, how do companies get this business if not responding to requests for information?
That's right.
Because I can't imagine a committee, you know, making these choices in the dark. So, I mean, I would say if that is our option, that that should be part of, that we could take that vote tonight and just request the information in accordance with, as the solicitor's office has recommended or given us as an option. And I think that in terms of looking to change what we have as opposed to, again, go with a totally new system, the idea of, you know, the healthcare, absolutely, that was something that we've discussed in our conversations with our, the union. And again, it's that, there are a lot of different parts that are, that I think could go towards really garnering us some savings, and I think both sides of this conversation need to be willing to entertain those things. And that now is not the time to be trying to score points on either side of this conversation. We need to be looking at what's important, and we all know that it's the children that are in our care every day, and I think we need to make, be willing to consider some things and not necessarily be looking to make hay when, when things of this great an import are, and this is just the beginning, I mean, which is the worst part of all.
Ms. Laraba.
Thank you. My understanding of the superintendent's request is to give her the tools and the options to move forward with whatever we decide. If I understand correctly, you would need to put this out so that you can get information. That does not mean that we don't stop looking at our current situation and look for conversations with our staff and union to try to figure out more ways to cut it. But this just gives us the option, if we're still not able to make it to that number, to say, here's another, here's another path we can go. And one of the big things is keeping your options open. You know, again, we've had some tremendous strides made, and I don't want to discount that, and I don't want anyone to construe this to mean that this is a definite, we're going out. I think it's prudent to get the information in hand. I think we need to give you the tools and not tie your hands in that, in that respect, because you need to bring this information to us so that we can make an informed decision. So I would be supportive of allowing the superintendent to do that. Thank you.
Madam Superintendent, I know that Assistant Superintendent Lang would like to weigh in as well.
And he may be going to weigh in on the same issue that I am. Just a point of clarification, so the city manager assisted us in contacting a lawyer who specialized in exactly this issue with issuing RFPs. So it was a conversation in preparation for tonight with that lawyer yesterday, so it wasn't the city solicitor's office. Just, this is a very specific labor issue, so we want to make sure that we are crossing all our Ts, dotting all our Is, so that there was no missteps. I just want to clarify that point.
Just on that specific point, I'm sorry to jump in the order, but, so does the RFI, that is still an option. This updated meeting didn't negate that. Because I know I was going by what our solicitor's office had said.
Right. The point of clarification in the conversation with the attorney yesterday was that you had both options. Actually, he didn't even address the information piece. Yes, you do have that option, but that you also had the first option as well.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Mr. Lang.
Thank you. If I could just weigh in on a couple of points. The request for information that came up last spring that we spoke about is a tool that we would use to just gather information. We actually obtain information, I go to vendor shows and fairs and things like that, and that's information that we would actually have, you know, to consider what companies would do to come in. That's a non-binding legal process, and it's very difficult to actually pinpoint exactly what your savings would be, what your costs would be, just through an RFI process. It's exploratory. The request for proposals is a legal binding process. You would actually entertain that option if you wanted to solicit proposals from firms for a myriad of services. And our RFP last year was structured so that we would look at administrative services, class services among staff, if they were employed by the company, if they continued to be employed by the school department. There were multiple options that would come back in the proposal phase, and ultimately, the school committee would have to weigh in at the end of the phase and figure out what was in your best interest. So language is included within the RFP that actually says it's ultimately the school committee's choice in deciding whether to award a contract or not after you review the proposals. And you're not going to get hard data and hard numbers and proposals unless you do the RFP process. You're not going to get that information through RFI, because that is just going to be speculative on the half of the potential vendors that would be coming in. So if, and part of my concern, just based on where the conversation is going, is if we do want to have hard numbers and hard proposals to consider come budget time, it is, it will gear up. I'd have to put some time aside. It's a gear up to actually do the RFP process, and then you're looking at a 25 to 30-day window to receive the proposal. and then you're looking at a twenty-five to thirty-day window to receive the proposals and evaluate and whatnot. Um, I would recommend if that is something that you want to be able to entertain during this budget process, that you authorize the superintendent to issue an RFP if she determines that's in, um, our best interest. Um, and that does not preclude you over the next thirty days. And we would still, we're, we're negotiating with the union now, we'd continue to negotiate in good faith with the union around, um, these issues to try to get that deficit down to a, um, a break even if we could, or as closely as we possibly could. That would continue, um, as well as the solicitation of general information from vendors and, and whatnot. Uh, but if it is, I, I want to be clear, it is very time-sensitive, particularly given budget decisions. If it is something at all that you want to entertain, you would need to authorize the superintendent to do that tonight. Um, but then continue over the course of the next thirty, forty-five days, your bargaining and your, um, review of information and whatnot in anticipation of the budget process.
Thank you. Ms. Laraba then Ms. Martin?
As Mr. Lang said, that, um, the Request for Information would not give you hard numbers. It would really just give you a glossed over, this, we could do this, we could do that, we could do the other thing. An RFP would give you hard numbers, it would give you actual programs, it would give you, um, what their menus would be, what their staffing would be. They would, they would set that all up for you so that you could see day-to-day, okay, here's a four-week menu cycle, here is a staffing table, here is, you know, what we think overhead costs are. But more importantly, if, um, when we come down to it and we decide, if we decide that that's the way we want to go, if you go for an RFI, you then have to turn around and put out an RFP. So this would, if we go with the RFP, we get the hard information we need, but we also give ourselves the opportunity that if we decide to go that way, we're already there. And, and we're that much closer, because the, you still need time to, um, finish up the contract, get the training insight, and get them placed if, if we're looking for this for next year. So that would be my caution to you as my colleagues, that the difference between the two isn't, isn't such a simple, um, difference. It really needs to make sure that, that we give them the tools and the opportunity to get what they need and be able to move forward from there should we decide to go there. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Martin, I know we've gone around more than twice on this.
I'm sorry. I, I, just, just to clarify, the difference between the two is, and I appreciate the explanations on both fronts, I'm, I'm aware of them. I, I understand that. I, I, I'm responding to the fact that when we went through this a year ago, our mayor and our city solicitor told us we had acted illegally. So, the way you've described this to me is exactly the way an RFP process has worked for me in my professional life and in any other situation I've ever been in. That is what it is, that you get your information and it is the final deciding authority of this committee that makes that choice. But I have been told in writing that that's illegal. Now, either what we were told last year is wrong, or what we're being told now is wrong. In my mind, I want as much detail as we can possibly have. I mean, and it seems to make perfect sense that we should be able to do that. But again, I don't, I don't want us to get in a situation where we make this move and two weeks later, now we're going to spend the next six months fighting amongst ourselves and amongst others to determine that, you know, and being told that what we did was wholly illegal. I'm sorry, oh, sorry.
Assistant Superintendent Lang?
If I can, there were, um, multiple points to the legal opinion from last spring. The primary point was, um, and again, this is all off memory right now. The primary point was that the school committee did not authorize the RFP to be issued. Um, the solicitor felt that that was a subject of bargaining, and that it was ultimately the school committee's role in responsibility for bargaining, and where it was going to have implications on bargaining, had to be the entity to, um, to approve the issuing of the RFP. That it wasn't in the superintendent's purview to do that without the school committee giving the explicit authorization to do so. Uh, a second matter was, um, a delegation issue with the, um, whether the, uh, RFP should have been issued through my office or through the city purchasing agent's office. Um, what third issue? I mean, there were, there were other issues, all which, from what we're understanding from speaking, um, you know, yes, reviewing that legal opinion and speaking to a, um, a different attorney yesterday, by the school committee's action in actually seeking that, as long as you're entering it to good faith and you're actually interested in reviewing the proposals and ultimately going with what is going to be in the best case or the best interest of the school committee financially, um, you're in solid ground. Um, you would not want to issue an RFP if you have no desire to ultimately award a contract to another entity. So if a proposal comes in that's going to save you a million dollars, then you'd have really no right to say no to that. Um, you would be bound to take that as a serious proposal and to, um, as long as it was in your best interest, to entertain that proposal.
And I appreciate the, the points of distinction. The one that in my mind remained was this concept of if you went out to bid, you had to award a contract. And, and I know you're saying that if it was in our best interest and that this, but we were not given any of that flexibility. As I read the materials that came to me from the Solicitor's Office, it was extremely clear, it was, it was clear that the concept, you know, that there was a lot of concern about a subcommittee or the full committee, or the, your office or their, I mean, there was a lot of, you know, dancing around those topics. But for me, the real question was, did we have the right to put out a Request for Proposal when we were not convinced that that was the direction we were going to go in? That we were not convinced that we were actually going to award a contract at the end of it.
During the discussion on the floor of the meeting when this came up at the time, um, the RFP had been issued. Um, there was discussion among one or two school committee members at the time that they were just looking for information. Uh, this would not be just looking for information. This would be looking at soliciting hard proposals, hard numbers, and ultimately acting on them if this is determined to be in your best interest. And I think the city, again, I can't speak for the city solicitor, but her opinion was to the fact that if the school committee is just issuing this as more of a Request for Information, you just want to know what's, what's out there as possibilities, the RFP would not be the process, and I wholeheartedly agree. If you are serious about entertaining proposals to potentially outsource all or some of your services, then the RFP would be the tool to, um, to utilize.
Mr. Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think that we have to be very careful, and I understand what Ms. Martin is saying here, because I, I heard the same. And what I'm concerned with is that here we are going against what our city solicitor has said and advised us on, which I think would be, I think would be irresponsible on our part. Um, and, and I don't think, and again, with all due respect to the superintendent in talking with another attorney, I, I just feel a little more comfortable if, uh, if I'm following the direction of the city solicitor. I mean, that's, that's what they're there for. Uh, so, I mean, I can see if, if they want to go out with the RFI for the information purposes, then that's fine. Uh, but I think that we have to be very careful here.
Ms. Laraba?
Thank you. Um, I certainly can understand, uh, the concerns and the background that Ms. Martin brought up. I think, um, though we've approached it in a much different, if I understand everything that I've just heard, I think we've approached it in a much different, um, process. And my understanding is that you've spoken with an attorney who specializes this, and, and no disrespect to our city solicitor, she was basing her opinion based on how it was handled last year and the process that we went through last year to do that. So I, I would think that if we've got somebody who specializes in this and, and we've paid them good money for their expertise, and we have approached this in a much different fashion than we did last year, that we should still be on solid ground. And, and I, again, I think if we, um, send out an RFI, we're not in the position to act on it. Should that, we're not going to, one, get good information, but two, we're not going to be able to act on something if in fact, that's the, the way we want to go. And I think in the conversations that we've had, this has to be a legitimate conversation, it has to be a legitimate option. So I, I am interested in seeing what it has to say. I'm still interested in talking with our, our staff and, and trying to work it in-house, but again, it behooves us to be prudent and make sure we have that information. Thank you.
Ms. Darty then Mr. Larry.
Uh, thank you. I just want to, um, kind of look at this from my perspective. I, I think we are at a very different place this year than we were last year. Um, last year, we had not put in this huge effort to really look at whittling down those costs, the overcosts that we were facing. And it was kind of like, yeah, let's get some information. But this year, we've seen how, how much we're able to cut off and how much more we still have to go. We're also facing another huge, um, uh, cut in revenue, which is going to cause us to have, we're really looking very at the bone now in terms of where we cut. As, as was mentioned by my colleague, you know, we cut fourteen custodians, we still need clean buildings. You know, we're really down looking under everything we possibly can. Um, and I would not recommend that we requ, do a Request for Proposal unless we are seriously looking at this option. But I think we are seriously looking at this option. And the only way we can seriously look at it is to get the facts and to say, okay, is this in the best interest, um, for, for our district? And, and I think, as someone mentioned it for the school committee, we're really looking at the children. What's in the best interest of the children? Our key responsibility is educating those children. Um, so I, I can understand the difference in terms of the conversation that happened in this chamber a year ago, which it was a little looser. You know, we're looking at seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, wow, that's a lot of money, you know, that's coming out of the local budget for lunch, which isn't our core mission. You know, maybe we should get some other information. But today, we've looked, we've been able to cut quite a bit out of that, but we're really, we're not going to find it. We're not going to find three hundred thousand dollars in food waste or dropping the milk carton or whatever. So I, I personally, I'm seriously considering this option. I, I, I have, there are factors that concern me. I want to make sure that, you know, we're still serving a good food product, things like that. And I would think those are the things that we would see when we get those proposals back, that we could then start to weigh out what, what are our choices and what is going to be in the best interest of our children. But I think we are at a different place now, and I think we are looking for a proposal, because that's the level of detail that we need. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Larry?
Just, um, a, a quick question, and I think I'm going to rephrase the whole motion or make an amendment to my own motion. If we, if we do go with an RFP, if we vote to do that tonight, that process, I think you said was between, through you to Mr. Lang and to the superintendent, that takes thirty to forty-five days. Is that correct roughly to get that paperwork out before we get responses?
There, there's a, um, a timeline for the actual issuance. I'd have to check when it, we could get it out in the central register. You have to prepare the, uh, bid specs, that whole, um, thing. You're looking at a thirty to forty-five day window.
So you're not going to issue, if, if we vote on it tonight, when would you think, best guess, would you be able to get that actually out?
Um, I mean, hopefully within, it would go out within a week. I would push it. Because again, you've got to have that twenty to twenty-five day window for the advertisement, then you've got to have the proposals be received, be reviewed, and recommendation made. So I would push to have it on the street within a week. Um, again, abiding by the necessary timelines.
So just, just, so it's thirty days before you even, there's twenty days' window for people to come in and put their proposals together. So in that timeframe, you can actually sit down and work with our folks and take a look at some of the recommendations that have been made by Mr. Ferreira and, and many others in terms of looking at removing that deficit, as well as some of the under-after-mentioned stuff we can't talk about because of the union negotiations.
Yeah, I want to be clear. I mean, that has been happening and it will continue to happen through this entire process. Um, we're continuing to work with the unions to try to bring their deal to resolution, so that will be continuing to happen. Um, as a possible suggestion, just kind of hearing the way the conversation is going, one, um, thing the school committee could do tonight if it was comfortable, was authorize the superintendent to issue the RFP, which would, um, kind of clear the hurdle for the majority of the legal decision from last year. Um, this does involve collective bargaining, and we do have an executive session to talk about collective bargaining in the next week or so. Um, we could, it's kind of critical to go on record tonight to have the vote if you want to entertain this, because we can't wait for there to be a subcommittee, then bring it back to the committee and be able to do that. You could authorize tonight but not direct her to issue the RFP. Leave that in the purview of the superintendent. When we have our executive session to do collective bargaining updates and whatnot, we can have, uh, discussion as it pertains to bargaining about this particular topic. Um, but I can at least be doing all the pre-work, um, to, to prepare the RFP. Uh, and then, you know, we won't have to come back to this full body. Um, the superintendent would have the authority if the, the votes were there to be able to ultimately issue it if that was the decision.
Mr. Sheen is, has his hand up to speak. Is it okay with the school committee? Do you recognize Mr. Sheen?
We have a suspension of the rules.
We'll need a suspension of the rules.
Suspension of the rules.
Second, Mr. Larry. Hallowed in favor of the suspension, signify by saying aye. Mr. Sheen?
Thank you for allowing me to, uh, speak. Um, you know, just reading what Mr. Larry's, uh, Mrs. Laraba, Mr. Larry's, uh, motion was that was on the floor. Um, you know, instruct the superintendent to provide a break-even food service budget at a minimum within the upcoming proposed two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven budget, specifically at a minimum, removing the FDD Food Service Department budget, any current deficit or potential future deficit that may occur due to operation cost increase such as healthcare costs. On here, it makes no mention of issuing an, an RFP. Uh, I would ask that if an RFP, um, is going to be asked for, that there is a public participation form that would allow the people that work in there to speak, just like we had last time. Um, the other thing that, uh, seemed kind of ironic, last year when we were here, the budget for the food service was at roughly seven hundred and seventy-five thousand. You know, as we speak now, it could be anywhere from two hundred thousand to three hundred thousand. So that number has drastically reduced. Um, you know, obviously, like Mr. Ferreira had spoke tonight, there's some cost-saving measures that we think that we can achieve, um, through some of collaboration. Um, so it seems kind of ironic that last year, our number was, you know, like I said, seven hundred and seventy, and that number has come down dramatically. You know, so it seems like we're bridging that gap together. Now to go out and issue an, an RFP almost goes back to like, you're just kind of fishing for information. But that's just my opinion, okay? Um, I just feel that, you know, um, that we continue to work with the, with the committee, Mr. Lang, to try to bring these numbers, you know, to pretty much, you know, break even. Can that be totally achieved? I don't know. Close? Yeah. What I look at is, even if it's a two hundred thousand dollar deficit, for a hundred employees, that's two hundred thousand. That breaks down to about two thousand, two thousand dollars per employee. It's not bad considering, you know, uh, you know, what other employees are taking. But, um, I would ask that, uh, that before an RFP is solicited, that there is, um, uh, public participation and that it is advertised in the, in the paper, so people can come and speak about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Laraba?
Um, just to answer-
We're back on the regular agenda, Ms. Laraba.
I'm sorry. What do you need me to do?
Back on the regular agenda. We suspended the rules from Mr. Sheen. Back on the regular agenda. Ms. Laraba?
Thank you. Um, I'm so confused sometimes. Just to, to, um, answer Mr. Sheen's concerns, I think, um, again, we've talked about the, the problem with delaying the process. Certainly, um, going through the process and getting, um, getting the information, there should be plenty of opportunity for, um, information to get out to the public and have that, um, interaction with people saying how they feel about it. But I think before we even get information, before we have that information in hand, it would be premature to try to have that, uh, conversation. You know, obviously, without information, you'd have people misinformed or emotions very high. I think it would be more productive to have the information in hand and then have an opportunity to, to share that with the public. Um, and again, that's just my opinion. Thank you.
Mr. Lang?
Yeah, thank you. Um, through you to Mr. Lang. Um, so if we, if we issue, if we instruct the superintendent to issue an RFP, and, um, in the meantime, we come to an agreement with the union, we wipe out the, uh, what through, whatever, we wipe out the deficit, we do not have to proceed to, to, to honor the RFP, or do we have to?
I know what you're getting at. Um, anytime up until the actual opening of the bids, so whatever the posted day for the opening would be, um, a solicitation can be canceled by the issuing authority anytime prior to the opening of bids. And then the bids aren't open, they're returned to the vendors, so no one kind of knows the industry secrets about who's bidding what. Um, and the process just stops at that point. Um, the other, um, opportunity the school committee would have after the bids were opened to not entertain a bid would be if it was not in your best interest. Um, if for whatever reason, given the, um, the costs, the benefits, you know, a myriad of, of other reasons why it wouldn't be in your best interest. If it wasn't, you can reject the, um, the bids based on that. Okay. But again, I'm not recommending tonight, again, it was just to authorize the superintendent to at least get that vote out of the way- to at least get that vote out of the way, if that's your will, not to instruct her to issue the RFP. We can have that discussion in executive session pertaining to bargaining. And then the superintendent won't have to come back to the committee to act if that's the direction we want to go in.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Conway, then Mr. Leary.
Just very quickly, if we recommend the RFP, or the option-
To authorize it.
To authorize it. In the meantime, can we also have the city solicitor weigh in again to clarify it?
Yes, you can.
Because, you know, once again, I'm, you know, I think it's important that we do get information, but I'm going back to that point that the attorney is telling us one thing, and tonight, we're asked to do something different. And I don't feel comfortable with that, to be quite frank with you. I mean, I'm not sure the fact that a two-week delay, I don't think is going to be a major problem.
Thank you. Madam Superintendent, did you want to be heard?
Your Honor, Mr. Leary-
Just a statement to my colleague. We're not, we're doing what the city solicitor's saying, actually, in reality. So not, you know, it's been the longest motion in history, but we are doing what the city solicitor suggested.
Right.
So let's make sure when we write that, that the city solicitor's opinions are being adhered to, if in fact, we go forward with issuing the RFP. And the important part that's been articulated by Mr. Ferreira, that he's put some great proposals forward, by Mr. Lang, that we're going to have another executive session to sit down long before any of these bids will be opened up, means that there is time to bring this within-house. But if it isn't, then we're going to be, if you take a yes vote, it's going to be serious that if the numbers come back and it's advantageous to the school department, that we're going to have to go in that direction, which is exactly what the city solicitor articulated. So at this point, I'd like to amend my motion just to add to authorize, I forgot the specific language that you had, but the language to authorize the superintendent the authority to issue an RFP. And meanwhile, we're going to negotiate with our folks because we want them to be our employees. Unfortunately, we have a six to nine billion dollar deficit to deal with this year, and next year it'll be a mirror image, so it'll be over $25 million in three years. I mean, this isn't fun for anybody. Unfortunately, we have to look at every single item. Thank you.
First of all, I need a second on the, second by Ms. Laraba, since she was one of the original makers of the motion. Madam Superintendent?
I too would just like to reinforce what Mr. Larry just said. There's been no recommendation made by myself or the administration tonight that is in contradiction to my understanding of what we're required to do for an RFP. It's my understanding that it is in accordance with the guidance that you've been given tonight with the memo that we did receive, and that was confirmed yesterday in the conversation that we had with the attorney who specializes in the field. So I just wanted to be clear on the characterization from Mr. Conway, that in fact, that isn't the case.
Thank you. Motion as amended? The chair would, yes, Ms. Laraba.
I just wanted to respond on the, any possible delay. I don't think we can afford to delay. I think we need to, again, be able to have those options on the table for ourselves.
Thank you. On the motion as amended, the chair's going to ask for a roll call. Roll call, please.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Laraba?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Larry?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Melanazzo?
Yes.
Seven yeas, motion as amended, approved.
Thank you. Very good, very good debate. Next motion by Mr. Conway, to ask the superintendent to develop and present to the school committee a comprehensive plan and ongoing strategy geared toward preparing and supporting our staff to apply for administrative positions within our system. Second? Second by Mr. Larry. Mr. Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of weeks ago, we had some interviews for the headmaster's job at Lowell High School, and I'm sure we have a wonderful pick, and I'm sure this individual is going to bring the high school forward and do a great job. The only, the problem that I do have is the fact that when I take a look at, when I take a look at, we have over a thousand teachers, approximately 200 Unit B individuals, nineteen assistant principals, twenty-one principals, and not one of them applied for the headmaster's job. And I think that that question has been asked of me, and I'm sure it's been asked of a number of people here, why? And there is a lot of confusion. And I think that what we need to do is take a look and encourage our staff, because I think that every one of us here have gone into a number of different schools, and we have seen great education taking place. We have seen administrators do a great job on all different levels, and then to see one of the most important jobs in the state, as far as high schools are concerned, I mean, that's the second largest high school in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and yet nobody from our district applies. I think that what we need to do is, going forward, come up with some type of a strategy and some type of plan so we can encourage our staff to step up to that next level, whatever that level may be. And I think that, again, the talent, the talent is here. I think we just have to tap into it. And I think even as school committee people, we should encourage their staff and individuals to go forward and to take that step. And that's why I put that motion on here, because I think it's extremely important to have some homegrown leaders. And I think, as we said in the interview with the superintendent, Superintendent Augustus Scott, that, and I think everyone agreed, that it's good for morale. And especially in these difficult times, I certainly would like to see a program like this in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conway. Mr. Leahy?
Thank you. I like the motion when I discussed, when I talked about this briefly with my colleague. Over the years, we've asked the superintendent, past and present, to make sure we do hire from within. And I'm not 100% sure if I've talked to you about this before, but, I mean, we have always said we want to promote from within. We've asked, over the years, especially with Ms. Fatakani, that, you know, we almost demanded that we hire from within if we have the talent. And it's a great thing, and we've, maybe we've never asked for it in a formal, in a written policy, but we have asked for this. The one thing that does kind of bother me, though, is, you know, we're not going to lead people by the hands either. I mean, if people don't want to apply for these positions, there's a reason, and they don't want to. But, you know, I think that we do promote, we do encourage people to rise from within. But, you know, honestly, I just think if the times are what the times are, and people don't want to move up for whatever reason, you know, I guess, I guess I get a little offended that sometime the talk is, and in the paper, that, you know, the school committee is not encouraging this. But, I mean, we are. We always want to hire from within. And for whatever reason, anybody at the high school didn't want to rise up to the level of headmaster, then, you know, we'll go outside. So I think it's a great motion, but I did want to stress that, you know, we do strive to promote from within, and I just wanted to make that point. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Leahy. Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Post a vote. Thank you. Next motion by Mr. Conway, to ask the superintendent to prepare a report regarding the current mission and guidelines set forth for personnel screening committees in order to ensure that consistent and equitable practices are implemented in the hiring process throughout our system. Second by Mr. Leary. Mr. Conway?
First of all, I want to say that, before I speak on this motion, that I am not saying anything negative about selection committees, personnel screening committees. And I want to make that perfectly clear. We've had those in place for a number of years. I've been on quite a few of them in my tenure in the Lowell school system, and I found them to be effective. But I think that over the years, there might have been some changes that have taken place, and I think that when I look back at the screening committees, it was very consistent. Matter of fact, when you went to one of these committees, there was a set pattern of how many individuals were from Unit B, Unit A, from middlesex, from the university, from the business community, it was a set number. And I think that there's been a little bit of confusion, and I'd like to see that, I'd like to clarify that and make sure that we have some consistency there. And not only that, but also the charge that's given to these committees. Because I think that in the last, the last few months, there's been some committees that perhaps have only come forth with one individual. And I think that if we go back, the screening committees usually had, and I believe it was either three or four, that was the job of that screening committee, to pick the best three or the best four candidates. Wasn't to pick the individual for the job, but whoever the best three or four, bring those forth to the superintendent and let her make the choice. If she feels that the four that were brought forward weren't, were not a good fit for that particular job, then she would certainly have that option to go out and repost. So I just want to see something a little bit more consistent, something in writing that can clarify this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Conway. Ms. Laraba?
Thank you. I guess my question really is, what is, or clarification of what we use the screening committees for? You know, I understand for the headmaster, it's a huge, it's a big position I kind of get back to, and I know people are going to hit me, but, you know, having a screening committee for an athletic coach, so I guess I'm wondering, what are the parameters for deciding when we need a screening committee or not? Because I just think sometimes we bog it down when you have that many cooks in the kitchen. So if somebody could just clarify for me-
That should be in the report.
That that's, you know, why we're using personnel committees for different positions. I would appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions in the motion? Madam Superintendent?
I would like to take this opportunity to thank those who have sat on the community stakeholder groups. They gave a lot of time in the last three months for this process, and they were provided a great deal of guidance on what was expected of them, and they did deliver on that expectation. So we do appreciate their time and their effort.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Post a vote. Thank you. Last motion by Ms. Doherty, request the superintendent prepare a report updating the committee on the dual enrollment program, including trends for student participation over the last three years and cost to the local budget. Second by Ms. Martin. Ms. Doherty?
I think, Your Honor, I think the motion pretty much speaks for itself. I look at this as another piece of data that we can use going forward as we make our budget deliberations, to just really look at the program and see what the benefits are and if there are costs. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye. Post a vote. Thank you. Subcommittee reports, the chair recognizes Ms. Doherty, Lowell High School, report and approval of the minutes of April 13, 2010.
I think, Your Honor, the Lowell High Subcommittee did meet on April 13. We had a number of people present, myself and my colleagues on the Subcommittee, Dave Conway and Allison Laraba, as well as other committee members present, included James Larry and John Leahy. From Central Office, we had Dr. Chris Scott, Superintendent, Deputy Superintendent Jean Franco, Paul Schlickman, Coordinator of Research Testing and Assessment, Lowell High School staff, including Bill Samaras, Headmaster, Dr. Wendy Jack, Curriculum Director, as well as a number of Lowell High School lyceum teachers and parents of students, and we also had a student who was at the meeting. We had three items on the agenda. The first item was the Greater Lowell Community Foundation Scholarship Discussion, which I believe my colleague already explained on the floor, so I could just skip over that if everybody's comfortable with that. Thank you. The second item on the agenda was really looking at the AP report, which I'd like to take a moment to formally thank the superintendent for her role in getting this data to us, as well as Mr. Schlickman and clerical staff from Central Office who input the data, and everybody who was involved in getting this report. I think it was, it's very important information going forward. We hope to continue to update how our AP classes are doing, and just for general knowledge, the AP courses are advanced placement courses. Students, whether, if they're Latin lyceum students, they're eligible to take that placement. If they're non-lyceum students, they must test in, or be recommended by their teachers as a number of criteria in order to take an advanced placement course. It is a course that's very much prescribed by the College Board in terms of course content. Students at the end of the course must take an AP test to get AP credit, which is graded on a scale of one to five. Most competitive colleges want to see a four or a five on that test, and that trend is moving even more firmly into the four or five. Some colleges will accept a three. So what we looked at, what we saw with the, our current AP program at Lowell High School, Mr. Schlickman, due to Department of Education regulations regarding student anonymity, was only able to really give us very specific data on our AP courses that had more than 20 students involved. So of about 14 AP courses we offer at the high school, we only were able to look at data for seven of them. And the data showed us that in some ways, we looked at the, he did a comparison of national results, and we saw that some of our courses are pretty much meeting the national standard for the number of fours and fives our students are getting. Some are not as, meeting it, some are close. And I think the general consensus is that we want to obviously, as a minimum, meet the national standards for the number of fours and fives that our students receive on these test scores. We also saw a number of courses that had a chunk, a big percentage of students who were in the three category, which means they're very close to the four and five. And I think that we can use this information to inform the rigor and instruction of these courses going forward, and that, as I mentioned, we plan to continue to look at this data to, you know, see how we are comparing nationally with those courses that have the student enrollment that we can look at. We had a number of the lower student enrollment courses. We had earlier data that looked at just an average, and some of those courses, we might be, you know, really reevaluating whether we should continue to run those courses if we've got an average score of 1.6 or something. That was one that stuck in my mind. And that's where the dual enrollment program, the data we get from my motion tonight, might help us to look at. Maybe for those really small numbers of students taking AP courses where we haven't shown significant success in the scoring, it might be more beneficial for the students and cost-effective for our budget to put those into dual enrollment programs. So that would be something we'd be looking at in the future. Another piece of the AP report that I just want to briefly touch on was when we looked at scores compared by grades, we saw that, first of all, there's just a general sense that grades should correlate somewhat with the score you get at the end of the course. And there is some, obviously, some fluctuation in that, that grades are much more encompassing than one test, and we had a discussion about that. And then we also saw there is some discrepancy in terms of our lyceum students, in general, outperform non-lyceum students on the scores, yet on the grades, they're graded more harshly. And that's just something to be aware of as we look for consistency and rigor in all our courses. That was just a discussion that came up. And then one thing that we, that's on this report that looked at the grading by course, was that some of the courses, like if you look at statistics where they had some, in Mr. Schlickman's report, he talked about some staffing issues that came up around statistics one year. But if you look at over the course of the report, the three years, the data shows that course grades for statistics were consistently- course grades for statistics were consistently higher than performance on the test, and the statistics were 66% of the students got above a 79 for their course grade, but yet only 7% scored above a three on the actual test. So these are some, you know, as we look at data, we're always looking to do a better job, and how can we do a better job? And this is some of the stuff that we got out of the AP report. And again, I think that the piece that shows our courses that are on track with the national averages, and even some courses where our students are doing better than the national average, that's our goal, to move more of the courses towards that. The other item on the agenda was the discussion about the Latin Lyceum, specifically looking at consistency and equity regarding the course weighting system. What are the expectations for an honors level course? And we did have a lengthy discussion about this issue. I think it's ongoing, as we'll be getting some additional information. And actually, this was the only item that had a specific motion tied to it about further information we'll be looking for. And if I could read that motion, was by Ms. Laraba, seconded by me, to recommend to the committee as a whole to accept this report as a report of progress, which we'll do for the whole meeting, obviously, with plans to review the changes being made to the lyceum seminar. There was a lot of discussion that our freshman students are not used to the rigor of the lyceum, and that we had to really beef up the seminar program to make it more helpful and useful in time management, study skills, things like that. So this, the motion was to review the changes that are going to be made to the seminar, review the use of X2 among teachers and administrators at the high school, and include an update on opportunities for non-Lyceum and Lyceum teachers in grades nine and 10 to communicate about courses. That seems to be the area where there's most concern, because once students get beyond that and they're taking AP courses, that's open to Lyceum, and as I mentioned, non-Lyceum students test in. But when you're at that freshman year in particular, and they're all taking honors courses, you know, we're looking for consistency, that teachers' expectations are in fair, fairness to what the weighting is. And I would make that as a conclusion. I don't know if my colleagues have any comments, but I would motion as a report of progress.
Mr. Leahy?
Thank you. I just wanted to add that it was a good meeting, it was productive, but I think it was a wake-up call to all of us that, you know, when you have parents come down and they want to participate, and, you know, we had a debate over the rigor of the lyceum and the regular high honor classes, I guess. And, you know, we're saying as a high school and as a district that they're the same, and parents are coming in clearly saying that there's a difference. And, you know, we're not suggesting, I'm not suggesting that the weight, there'll be a weight difference in classes, but we need to straighten that out, and we need to listen. They had legitimate concerns, everybody came down, they spoke well, and it was an honest discussion. And all it says is, we need to take a look at it, it's been, I guess, 10 years, and we need to make some adjustments. So I thought that the debate was good, and it's just, as I said, it's a wake-up call to us to get our, to, you know, to get this in order, and listen to what the parents are telling us and what the students are telling us. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Very quick, I just wanted, before we accept the report into the record, I was not able to attend that event, so I'm listed on here, so I just wanted to make sure it's accurate.
Okay, thank you.
Sounds like I missed a heck of a meeting, so.
We're actually going to do two things. Accept the report as a report of progress, but also accept the motion regarding the Latin Lyceum. It's actually in the minutes of the meeting, I don't know if you need me to read it again, but Ms. Darity actually read it verbatim. So the motion would be to accept the report as a report of progress, and the motion regarding the Latin Lyceum by Mr. Leahy, seconded by Ms. Laraba. All of them, Mr. Leahy?
I just want to add, though, too, that when we take this as a report of progress, we want something to happen, right? Something's going to happen out of this. So does that mean something's going to happen, or does that just mean, thanks for talking about it?
Ms. Darity, then Mr. Leary.
Just in answer to my colleague's question, we are going to be getting additional information, which is the motion that's written in the report. We, this conversation is not over. We need more information, and, thank you.
Thank you.
You're a brave man, Mr. Leary. Any further discussion on the two-part motion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed, vote. Thank you, Ms. Darity. The second Subcommittee Report, the Finance Subcommittee, which met this evening, the chair recognizes Mr. Leary.
I'll be very long. It was a, it was an excellent report by Assistant Superintendent Anne Murphy. It was another one of our Finance Subcommittee meetings in preparation for the budget. The entire school committee and the mayor were in attendance, and I thank you each for being there. The report was regarding Student Services, as well as looking at our legal in-house council, staff council for Student Services. And I won't get into specifics tonight regarding it, other than, I guess, the important parts that we discuss, and let anybody comment as they see fit. The first part is the recommendation from the administration is not to cut the Student Service budget this year. I think from what they've explained is that we've had significant cuts already in the past few years, as our needs continue to increase, as well as, I think Mr. Lang said basically that our circuit breaker monies for out-of-district costs actually were, which usually are in the 70% range, actually were in the 30, the 35% range, which is a significant decrease. As the superintendent articulated, that's, it's kind of like a hidden cost that costs hundreds of thousands of dollars that we don't speak often now, often about. But in place, putting the procedures in place that we have now, we are keeping our outplacement costs in-house as much as possible. The, I'll end by saying this, the challenge in the, pick an adjective, the continuing maddening of this issue is next year we won't have stimulus money paying for this, we will have to absorb this in the in-house budget. So it's just another issue to, to address. Quickly, the Student Council, Student Services, as last year, many committee members were inquiring about making that as a budget cut. As Assistant Superintendent Anne Murphy pointed out, they actually save us significant dollars in the realm of almost $200,000 by having them in-house, in-house, with items that we can count on, i.e., outside council costs, what it would have been if we had used them per hour. What's not clearly measured is the, all the time they put in when we ask them questions offline. You know, should we do this? Can we do this? All the work that they put into, without charging us or without counting us as billable hours. So I think the, it's cost-effective by having in-house counsel at this point from a variety of points. I'd make that as a, a motion as a report of progress as part of our upcoming budgets, just to articulate, I believe the administration will present their full budget on May 19th, which is our second meeting in May. There'll be, I believe, two more Finance Subcommittee meetings prior to that, one on May 5th, which the agenda eludes me, the first Wednesday in May. And the second one, which I think a lot of folks might want to attend, is actually on a Friday, on April 30th, which is the Lowell High School budget proposal, which I think folks would, obviously, both of them are very important, but I think that one's on a Friday, but will be televised. So I make that as a point of information, and a, our motion is for a report of progress on today's budget, on today's discussions.
Thank you, Mr. Leary. Motion by Mr. Leary to accept the Finance Subcommittee Report as a report of progress, seconded by Ms. Laraba. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, vote. Thank you. Reports of the superintendent, we have one item this evening, a community forum for parents studying bullying and violence in the wired world. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, your honor. As a district, we continue to wrestle with the harms of bullying and to address bullying throughout our system, and many efforts have been taken, in particular since 2006, with the series of five community safety summits, and they were held throughout the district. Since that time, we have sponsored at least one district-wide parent presentation per year on bullying prevention, cyber safety, and maintaining a safe and respectful school environment, including the presentation of the Massachusetts Aggression Reduction Center. In anticipation of the new legislation, all our schools have adopted, designed, and integrated a violence prevention program into each of our schools. These school-wide social skills, violence prevention, and conflict resolution programs teach students to change attitudes and behaviors that contribute to bullying and violence. To assist with this, each school has been given a copy of the United States Department of Education booklet Preventing Bullying, a manual for schools and communities, as well as the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Handbook, Direct from the Field, A Guide to Bullying Prevention. On Monday, May 3rd, at 6 o'clock, at Lowell High School Auditorium, we are sponsoring, along with District Attorney Jerry Leone and the Lowell Police Department, a form on anti-bullying, anti-violence, anti-violence measures that communities need to be aware of to address these very serious, ongoing issues. I continue to invite parents to call my office. We are there to assist. I would like to thank Assistant Superintendent Murphy for this report, and for her staff. As she reported out in the meeting earlier, it's a very small department, and we are very responsive to the calls of parents who have concerns with students who are experiencing bullying, and we do have limited resources, but it is a priority for us to make sure that all our students feel safe in our schools. So I thank Assistant Superintendent Murphy for their ongoing efforts. And as, as well, we are setting up a forum for the fall, we're already starting to plan that. Again, public education forum around this particular issue involving, again, Jerry Leone and the Police Department and the School Department, and we will advertise that well in advance as well. So that's the update on that. Thank you.
Any questions, comments? Motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Darity, to accept the report as a report of progress. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, vote. Thank you. Any new business, Madam Superintendent?
No, your honor.
Thank you. Convention conference requests, we have three.
Motion to take them together?
Motion by Ms. Darity to take them together, seconded by Mr. Leahy. Question?
Sure. Take them all?
All those in favor, take them together, signify by saying aye. Thank you. Mr. Leahy?
Thank you. I just have one observation, and I did speak to superintendent about this. On the first one, I guess, it would be appreciated if they could come fast. I was looking at the dates, and I, you know, I don't know what the circumstances of it are, but I would just say that this trip is planned for next week, and I did ask you about it. So just, if any of our colleagues did have a question, I would appreciate that if they could come through a little bit faster. I saw it was signed on March 19th, but then 4/12. So whatever the delay was, if we could just get them, if we had had this at the last meeting and there weren't any questions, we'd, we'd be all set to go to the next meeting. But as it is now, there really isn't any questions for it, but, you know, just don't want to feel like we're in a box. Thank you.
Thank you. I still need a motion to approve the conventions as requested by Mr. Leary, seconded by Ms. Darity. Roll call.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Darity?
Yes.
Ms. Laraba?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Melanazzo?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Thank you. Under Communications, we have one item, Lowell Telecommunications, Channel 10, broadcast of school committee meetings, again, live on the first and third Wednesday of the month, again, Thursday at 6:00 p.m., Saturdays and Sundays at 2:00 p.m., and Tuesdays at 10:00 a.m. Except the communication placed on file by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Leahy. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Thank you. Professional personnel, we have one item, the members of the United Teachers of Lowell hereby request to donate sick leave days to the following power professionals, Robert Collett, Butler Middle School, 14 days, Sandra Levecq, Riley School, 14 days. Motion to approve the request by Mr. Leary, seconded by Mr. Leahy. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Darity?
Yes.
Ms. Laraba?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Melanazzo?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Any civil service items this evening? None. Motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Darity, that we adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
Nice.